I was just wondering what the sign up sheet is for contact tracing in case that becomes necessary. Is there a sign up sheet that you agree with on your name, so we know who's present? I think, I think that would be important for contact tracing in case it becomes necessary.
All meeting order.
Jeremy Hoyt here. Hodger Martin here. Lori Meyer here. CJ K. Shaw here. Ricky Richardson here. Jason Wachter here. Billy Haye here.
Please stand for question.
The life of the United States of America and into the republic of our citizens. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a statement about the meeting was not already noticed?
We have both an hour of our policy.
Okay, I mean a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
You got a motion and a second to approve the agenda and any discussion? All the papers seem to be by the same line. Opposed? Motion here. When did you please involve in the plan? To start the 2020, 2021 to 2022 year.
I put a PowerPoint together this summer I had that will explain where administration is recommending at this time. Well, the first slide says how it will get here. July 15th supportive, I voted to start the year in a hybrid model, four days per week and one day for full virtual. Administration was asking aside about students and put together the plan of details of how to do this to be accomplished. July 29th supportive that, voted to start this school year open five days per week. Basic framework that administration is following and key assumptions we're using for this plan is school is open five days a week. The plan is designed to follow the recommended guidance of the C E C, D H S, and D P I regarding physical distancing and protective materials. In an effort to ensure a sustainable school year opening. And it's also designed to mitigate the risk of liability to the school district. There are two different learning models available. Learning model one, or there's two different models built into this in terms of, of, uh, uh, school happenings, I guess you could say, the first is school is closed. The schools are ordered to be closed by the state, the county health departments. Where the school district lacks the available staff to effectively supervise and meet the needs of students. There are two educational options that parents have available to them. The first is remote learning. It's similar to the spring of 2020. And second option is virtual learning. It's a use of an online educational provider. And the request would need that families commit to this for the full semester due to the difficulty in transitioning between the two different models. Second option would need the buildings are open. In which case, there are three different available options here. The first is parent elected remote learning, which as we said earlier is similar to the spring of 2020. The second option is face to face learning. Which was the motion that the board made at the last meeting. And the third option is virtual learning, which is the same virtual learning option that was presented in the first model related to an online provider. Expectations of remote learning. All students will log in during their required times throughout the day to participate in live screen instructions for their teachers in their respective classes. Students in grade five will need to have a parent or an adult caregiver at home with them. At all times to assist with technology, helping the child stay on task and to assist as a learning coach. When needed, or make arrangements to establish a plan for asynchronous learning. Learning activities will be posted on group of classrooms. Students will be expected to submit completed assignments to group of classroom unless otherwise instructed by teachers. Expectations for in-person learning. Students will be screened at home prior to entering the building. Screen process is something we've already talked about related to temperature and symptoms. Any signs or symptoms, child needs to stay home until symptom free for 24 hours. Without the use of medication designed to reduce temperature. Unless there is a COVID positive case, then we would follow the recommendations of the county health department. And the protocol they have established, or will be established, I'm sorry. Staff and students who aren't face covering at all times while district property, district provided transportation when social distancing is not maintained. That's the guidance from the C E C. Expectations for in-person learning. We will put clear screens may be placed in high traffic areas, offices, food service, bus driver compartments, teacher desks. Student tables are used instead of individual, or in places that student tables, I'm sorry, are used instead of individual desks. We will put some form of a clear screen. Drinking phones will be turned off, but hot water cooling stations will remain on. Visitors, parents, and vendors are not allowed in the building without administrative approval. Anyone in the building are required to wear face covering at all times. Elementary school instruction will be based on the essential standards established for each grade level in our content area. There will be no in-person assemblies, field trips, visitors, or volunteers allowed in the building when students are present. And all elementary sessions will be conducted in the educational space of the special teachers and done on a two week rotation. To ensure safe social distancing, the student to teacher ratio will average 15 to one per grade level. Little senior high instruction will be based on the essential standards established for each grade level in our content area. There will be no in-person assemblies, field trips, visitors, or volunteers allowed in the building when students are present. Band will be held in a small gym, choir will be held in the choir room. And to ensure safe social distancing, the student to teacher ratio will average 15 to one per grade level or class area. What is needed to impact the plan? We're going to need clear screen dividers. Most commonly seen one right now is Plexi glass. Which we found to have a two to three week lead time when using a vendor or 45 minutes away. The cost of a sheet is $130 and I believe 40 cents per four by eight sheet of Plexi glass. A tent rental to provide additional outdoor classroom lunch space at Teddy Woodlawn. This is Johnson and I met with Briggs Tent Rental last week on Thursday morning to discuss putting a tent over the basketball court area at Teddy Woodlawn. To provide an opportunity for, uh, outdoor academic space coupled that with outdoor, uh, lunch space. And also having for kids to get outside in case it was, uh, excuse me, in case it was raining. We would then have dividers placed there. The estimate for that to rent from the first of, uh, start of school till the first of the calendar year is a little over $10,000. We also got a quote on one for, uh, behind, uh, the school down below by where the fifth grade is. But a small tent there would be about 2,400 square feet, which would allow two 1,200 square foot areas. Uh, that, uh, same concept, same purposes, used by music, used by art, uh, those kinds of areas are added in the building along with the fifth grade. And the cost of that would be about 40, uh, around just under $4,500 for the same time period as the previous one. We'd also need to increase our Wi-Fi capabilities, um, to cover outdoor spaces. We have to increase staff to educate virtual students and reduce the student to teacher ratio over 15 to one. We'd have to increase additional supplies to outfit new classrooms. Finally, uh, just kind of the board options. The way I see it, number one is to approve the plan as presented, number two is to reject the plan as presented. Provide administration with additional direction on what they would like to see different in a plan. Or number three would be to amend the plan to something the board is willing to approve.
Do you have questions, Tom?
Yep.
All right. How is Manami, for example, a different mass as we've argued that has made the 15 to one? Let's do it at the staff ratio, because from what I understand, they're, they're hiring minimal staff, minimal more staff.
I've heard that Manami is hiring an additional 20 plus staff numbers.
Okay, so.
And they're also going to hybrid, I believe, in their middle secret high schools that are allowing, so that's going to assist with that.
They're hiring 20, they're three, three times the size of us now, as we are assuming, at least twice the size. Do you expect us to approve the addition of 16 more positions? I'm just trying to understand the budget factor.
I was asked to create a presentation around a five day a week model that I thought was in the best interest of the school district. To provide the opportunity for the kids to come back safely.
Okay, then, well, that's the money, then how do you pay for that?
We would look at fund balance.
And that's okay, do you think?
I don't think it's okay, but I don't think this is a, uh, I think this is a time where you have to look at all different measures to provide a way. Create a safe educational environment for the students and staff.
Okay, so what do we do for the, the school year 21, 22? What are our options? Because it's probably still going to be here, it's just like the crew or anything else, I mean, once the virus is here, it doesn't disappear. It's here forever, probably. So what do you do with 21, 22?
Process of resuming it there, I mean, I think there's, I think there's evidence to say that that's possibly will not be here in 21, 22?
Um, for the, the virtual learning, uh, remote learning, whatever you want to call it. What is the expect, expectations for the teachers, for the students? There's a lot of expectations put upon the parents of the students. And or the students themselves. But I know the personal experience and from other people that talk to me that when we were doing the virtual this spring. Trying to get in contact with teachers was difficult. And I understand that was a, when they have like the man thing, because we just got put into that real quick. But I don't, my youngest boy, it's been straight A's his whole life, he got his first B. And it was devastating to him because he couldn't get in touch with his teachers. The communication was horrible. So, is there expectation for teachers?
Yes, staff would be available to assist students, obviously during the classroom that they've signed in for. As part of remote learning, as if school were in the classroom. And they would also have their prep period, their power hour, and their contracted time to be available to students.
Okay, then with this, uh, five day a week plan supposedly, is there extra prep time figured into this for the teachers?
There's not.
Uh, wasn't that asked to have be provided?
Yes, I was asked to be provided, but the recommendation would be to hire people to handle virtual students. Which would then allow the staff to not need the extra time because there would be somebody else to assist with the virtual students.
How many virtual students do you anticipate?
I have no idea. I don't know how I could guess that number.
So once we decide, whatever we do, can we do a survey to see, to get a really good idea of what parents are going to send virtual? Or are we going to do or send to school? Is that something that's not?
The thought process that administration would have is as soon as the plan is approved, we would send the plan out to the families within a 24 hour period. Give families an opportunity to digest the plan and then send out a survey not long after that, asking parents for what their educational preference is. So we can then have a more finite number of what we're dealing with. To then put us in a position to better understand what our numbers are going to be. To really truly determine what possible additional staff we need to get.
Is that a decision that can be made after that, of what we actually feel we need? For, uh, you know, right now we're protecting everything, this is five more space there, and so maybe five more minutes right now. You know, if we only need a couple, i- is that something we can do after?
Yes.
The survey back?
Yes.
But with the virtual, the, the four are virtual? So is that the only thing they will do is just virtual? Or is the main, our, our main staff, teachers, will they be open or?
It would be a qualified teacher in those respective areas that would assist those students in just those respective areas.
What happens, uh, if we're going through this and all of a sudden, everything is good in the community, there's not an area we have, we're stuck with all the extra staff? What do we do?
Do a one-year contract?
So we're stuck paying them regardless?
You could explore looking at a different contract proposal to say that it would be a applicable employee, you can terminate it as long as it's longer needed.
It's a lot of money to spend when in my, from the people since, uh, last meeting. I could just, I can't, I don't even know how many people said, five days a week, make it happen. To keep 15 to one. What I, what I try to understand is, we as a, as a group are here to supposed to educate our kids to the best of our abilities. To the best. And I don't think there's one person in here that will deny that having, within the built, uh, walls of this building is the best way to educate our kids.
I would like to say we need to educate our kids, yes, we need to educate our kids safely.
And there's a lot of people on the front line, the hospitals, working in department stores, and every single day they're exposed to hundreds of different people every day. And that part of the world continues to go around.
Uh, I don't think, uh, anybody in here doesn't want to keep our children safe. Anybody's for that, one way or the other. I think that what Craig's looking for is, we need to make it a motion. And you can make a motion to approve five day a week with amendments. And if there's things in there that you don't like, you can make a motion to that point. And, uh, if that changes later because of our numbers, uh, and virtual versus the ones in person, we can always make adjustments to it too. So if there's something in there that you can't live with, uh, I think you can make the motion. You can make the motion to go ahead with this plan with amendments, and we have outlined the amendments at this time.
Well, I like, I like to see the, want to make an emotion then. Like make the motion to approve this, uh, five day a week plan with modifications with a virtual option. The, I get the modification or amendments that I have, I take exception with. The unknown, the 1.1 to 1.2 million additional teaching staff that is yet to be determined or is, or even is even needed. The, uh, the tent rental I have questions about because what are we going to do if the weather's terrible and or gets really cold? It's the first part of October or middle of October.
I think you can get eaters, Jason, I've seen them a lot. Uh, that was a point I was thinking I wrote down too. I'm very confident that you can get eating systems work.
And then the $200,000 discretionary fund that has been outlined to the board. And the extra 125,000 in material to outfit, uh, new classrooms. I just can't swallow the numbers.
What is the $200,000 discretionary funds, Greg?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, before we get into the discussion, I think that Jason needs to make his motion, he needs a second, then we'll get into the, uh, get into that discussion. On however, um, you have to clearly outline which one of those that you're going to eliminate in your motion.
How would you do it this way, they'll be in here. For the additional expenses that have been outlined to the board, that I have no problem with, tech class dividers. Um, increased Wi-Fi and the increase, and, uh, don't know how much of that increased cost to move them. I, I can, I can live with those numbers.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, in what, uh, Jason suggested. Uh, now it's open for discussion.
I, I think, uh, the 15,000 for the tent option, it does seem excessive, but to, to just help. Get these kids pushed back and spread out more, I, I don't see that issue, I would like to see that in there. Yeah, that would be my only, uh, other, other deal to add there, I, I would like to see the 15,000 for the tent rental.
Okay, is that, basically, are you asking for a friendly addendum to Jason's motion?
Yes, I would.
All right, we got to go back to the author then, Jason, do you agree with that?
We both agree.
Okay, you second Audrey, are you okay with that?
I didn't catch what you lost that.
So what I, what I want, Audrey, is add it to Jason's, uh, uh, motion to, to approve the extra $15,000 for the tent rentals. Uh, I, I just feel it's a good situation, um, to do everything on our part, to the best of our ability to try to get these kids spaced out. Um, I, I do agree with Greg and the administration staff on that one to, to, to pass and to, to get them pushed out a little bit. Um, I'd like to see that $15,000 added.
Can I ask a quick question, Greg? Have you, do you look at also utilizing like the cafeteria and?
Yes.
You can, you can get rid of a couple classrooms divided within there?
Possibly, yes, but you're also looking at opportunities to then allow kids to not have to eat, have lunch in their classroom. In order to do that, you're going to have to create secondary spaces with which to eat beyond the cafeteria, and that's what part of this would be utilized for.
Part of the tent is pretty.
For us.
And plus it just gives the kids more freedom here to try to get them out and, and also the staff to just try to space them a little bit.
So, so to clarify that, Audrey, you just say the tent expense back in there in Jason's motion, are you secondary, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, how many of the, how, how many things are going to change before this royal quest? It changes every day.
We don't have to move with that, yes, it could change, you're right.
So face coverings are required for staff and students?
This, 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 the mandate might be right now.
What happens if the mandate is overturned or the mandate runs out?
If it runs out, yes, it does.
So why do you kind of consider that that time?
Further discussion.
So you're not going to do anything with any virtual teachers until you know what the numbers are? Does that sign up number, if I'm hearing?
Only logical.
But what's your time turn on here, survey battery?
Um, the board will approve a plan today, we'll hopefully have it out by the end of the day tomorrow. Uh, it's planned today, we probably put out a survey early next week. Number one, you turn it on, probably what would that be, the, what's the seventh on Friday, so somewhere around, we close the survey around the fourteenth?
For administration, is that enough time? Add what time, I mean, the best we have right now to, to do that?
To get the survey out?
Correct.
We have no other option.
Right, I, I mean, this is, you can do it again.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the paper, the motion's satisfied with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, appearances before the board. Linda, you have a list?
Yes.
Okay, one of them falling off our person, give you three minutes.
First is Stephanie.
I mean, one people get a chance to talk there.
First one is Bethany Walker. Is the microphone rising? Good afternoon, my name is Bethany Walker and I am here on behalf of, uh, microphone is on. Good afternoon, my name is Bethany Walker and I am here on behalf of a Facebook group called For Our Kids. And also as a concerned parent with three children enrolled in this district. During our time here, Mr. Dover spiked, Mrs. Johnson, and Mr. Fluss, along with countless outstanding teachers. Quickly instill confidence in me that we have landed in a place where my kids will be safe and learn well. At last week's board meeting, I was deeply disappointed in this board's conduct and decision making, which did not reflect. On my past experiences with administration and teachers. I was confused by the way that the level reopening plan was so nonchalantly dismissed by the board. And now yesterday, maybe I shouldn't have been surprised, but I was also surprised by the change in the agenda for today. And the order of things, and I wondered if I was alone in my concerns and I decided to start For Our Kids. For the purpose of question gathering, providing a safe space for conversation, and educating myself and others on how the district got to this point. In the course of 72 hours, the group started with three members and grew to 264 members. The group represents parents, grandparents, retired substitute, and current teachers, students, alumni, and community members. With no listening session, per feeling our community questions planned as part of the reopening. I have prepared a list of questions for you, which I'm prepared to give you today for your consideration. As you, I, your mouth details, there's approximately 86 questions on there and the list is growing. Last week, one board member of the meeting stated it is our job to educate the kids. And the only way to do that is to have them in the building five days per week. This statement made no mention how you plan to safely accomplish that. But I know that this board collectively cares about safety. You take time out of the classroom morning for fire drills and tornado drills. You keep students home, the roads are too dangerous for travel, you practice lockdown procedures, and you worked that plan impressively last year. When a legitimate threat made it necessary. And you do care about safety, but if you ignore the legitimate safety threat on us now, with no preparedness to deal with it. Your goal of educating our kids will become impossible. In a recent W R D M interview, one of your board members stated that each child in the district represents approximately $10,000 in funding from the state. Money that is vital for providing top-notch education. The Facebook group that I started represents families of 230, 230 of your students. Or 2.3 million dollars in funding. Who currently have close to 100 unanswered questions about your reopening plan. Students can't learn if they don't feel safe, and if they need to go elsewhere to feel safe, the funding goes with them. Teachers cannot teach if they do not feel safe. And if they need to go elsewhere to feel safe, we won't have the number of my people left to teach our kids. Thank you. we won't have the number of people left to teach our kids. Thank you. Johnny Cattell?
Hi, I'm Johnny Cattell. I'm a native, also mom, parent, and community member, and the wife of a teacher in Durant, Arkansas school district. I attended this school board meeting on July 15th when administration informed the school board of the results of the survey that was sent out to the parents and staff in the school district. Based on those results, both stated that the hybrid model of teaching was the best course of action to take to enter school this fall. The school board agreed with what administration has suggested, and the school board made a motion for administration to put together a level plan that included the hybrid model opening school this fall. Five members of school administration along with 24 teachers from both schools worked together on a plan that focused on student safety as well as keeping indoor staff safety and the size of classrooms. People who work every single day with the students and staff presented this plan to the school board. According to the board documents on the district website, 12 can board district administrator relationship. Policies should not be originated or changed without the input or recommendation of the district administrator. The district administrator, as the chief administrative officer of the school district, is a primary professional advisor to the board. Ray Dover's side did his job advising the board of advice professionally, advice plans, keep students and staff safe and healthy. When the school board could ask for at the July 15th meeting. So my question is, what happened? I understand that parents want their kids in school. We all, of course, wish there wasn't a global pandemic, and teachers wish they could also return to normal and teach their students. But that is not the current reality that we live in. Once COVID cases become positive at school, students will all be doing 100% virtual learning. They will be sick, their friends will be sick, and our teachers will be sick. When teachers are sick, because students aren't very mass or aren't able to social distance, who will teach the kids then? Most substitute teachers are retired professionals already considered high risk, who will not want to come to innovative classrooms. How many cases before we go 100% virtual? If this school year is going to be successful, parents and staff need to work together to implement a plan that parents, students, and the staff feel comfortable with, and a plan where the safety of everyone is taken into consideration, including the staff. What are we teaching our kids when we as adults can't even see each other? I hope to respectfully ask the board to please consider the level plan of the hybrid model that was proposed by the administration that was very well detailed and carefully thought of. However, when I came here tonight, I noticed that we did not have an hard-finding team so that we could not hear the voices of others. As a sign note, per discussion of the hybrid plan, how do you plan to find more staff than the staff you already have sitting in this room who do not feel comfortable with this hybrid plan? Thank you.
Kathy Dahl?
Hello, I am Kathy Dahl. I live in a school district. I was a school nurse for Durant and Arkansas schools for 40 years until 2017. First, thank you to the board and administration for your service. I know you, and I know you all care deeply for your community, and we have a difficult job. The main thing I wanted to share with the board as I deal with the COVID pandemic was of my experience as one of the trenches of school health and public health and communicable illness in school. During the past 40 years, we, by that I mean the health staff, teachers, and administration, we dealt with communicable diseases often, and we always relied on advice from our local public health experts, from locally enacted state level, along with our resident providers. If there were ever any questions at all, anything, I was connected with them. I trusted them. Their advice was based on science and approved by our medical advisor. This served our district well. Our actions were always defensible from a school health and legal perspective. Just to cite some examples, we made preparations for a pandemic in 2009 with H1N1, and thank God we all dodged that bullet. But whether it was for worries about AIDS in the eighties and nineties, MRSA in the two thousands, influenza, vaccinations, diseases, norovirus, the campyill bacteria in 2013, chickenpox, or anything else, the first thing we did was develop our plans with input from the communicable disease experts, starting with Kevin County and DPI and so on. The level plan that the administration and staff developed would completely fit with the way we operated in the last 40 years. The best thing about the plan is that it can change as the COVID rates change. And certainly, we know it's a moving target, and I'm always thankful that you're always up to make more changes if needed. Remember, this is a temporary plan. Don't forget, I believe the vaccine will really help with this in the future. I am speaking for myself, but I know that the other local, some of the other local medical providers have also voiced concern. I hope you will reconsider and work with your staff on the plan that you had your employees develop. It is the safest thing for everyone. Thank you.
Kathy, thank you, and thank you for your 40 years of service.
Grace Seltzer?
My name is Grace Seltzer. That will be a senior this year at Durant. As a student with asthma, going back to school for five days a week is terrifying to me. Going back to school should not be scary, but with masks not being mandated, it is, especially not wearing properly, over your belt, stuff like that. I understand that wearing a mask for eight hours straight is not ideal for most students and staff, but it needs to happen for our own safety. I realize that you may already made a decision on how school to run this year, but I would highly recommend you switching your decision. In my personal opinion, as a student, the hybrid model would be the best and safest way to run school. Without the hybrid model, the possibility of spreading the virus increases our safety. Somebody could be asymptomatic, and his friend could have a pneumonia, and that's the biggest issue. You could have no symptoms whatsoever, still show up to school, still wear a mask, still wash your hands, and still not be happy. I'd like to find out how difficult it is to social distance in school, especially if the cranks face after each hour. In addition to these passing periods being difficult, how will those small classrooms, like the ones we have here in Durant, be safe when we cannot distance ourselves properly? And how will active shooter drills be spaced out for safety? Safety for everyone should be your number one concern right now. If it's not, please change your opinion. I know it's not ideal, but something has to be done about this for the safety of our students and staff alike. If you have to have kids, which I'm guessing most of you do, despite their age, how would you feel if they were the ones carrying the virus and spreading it to everybody else? Upset by directed spreading it to you, your family members, and everybody else in the school? So how many people does your challenge act with per day? The correct answer is quite a lot, and some of those people are in the age range that could be considered highly at risk, while others have underlying health conditions, such as myself. Keep in mind that that spread could be going on from 7:45 a.m. to about 3:30 p.m., about eight hours a day, and for five days a week, which equals a total of 40 hours per week. With that in mind, I would like to ask for your reconsideration of the hybrid model. With rising case numbers, please stand up and come in. This is going to be a bit, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dana?
I'm here on behalf of my daughter, Long Jody Parsham. Dear board members, I want to start by saying that I do not envy you for the position you are in nor the decisions you have to make. No matter what is decided, someone's going to be upset. Thank you for your work as members of the Board of Education. The 2021 school year will be my fifth year working as a high school special education care professional. I love and take pride in my job. I volunteer my time in many areas, which shows my commitment to this district, to the students, and the community. I always thought we did a great job of keeping our children safe at school. We practice fire drills, tornado drills, and even valor drills. We go over every pen, bloodwork, pathogens, and medical trainings every year to assure our students are safe. Every day, we will find parents stationed at the bus drop and pickup areas to assure students are also safe. Safety needs to be our top priority. The plan that our administrators presented to you was carefully planned and thought out. It left no confusion about how to proceed. The fact that board of education dismissed every aspect of that plan is supremely concerning to me. I have no assurance that my children nor others are safe with all the students in the building five days a week, with no social distancing nor mandatory face passing. Just this past May, my sixth grade daughter was diagnosed with paralytic low epilepsy. This diagnosis does not make her more susceptible to the virus, consequences are much more complicated and severe. When my daughter gets a simple ear infection, it triggers seizures daily for a week. I worry enough about her contract in the common cold, and I'm terrified at the prospect of her contract in COVID. Every seizure is a chance for her to suffer long-term and permanent brain damage. I cannot send my children to school in a district that does not put their safety first. Without a plan, with no steps being taken to ensure health and safety, how can I possibly send her to school? We would have no other choice but to need to resign my position, pull my three children from the Durant, Arkansas district, and homeschool or open enroll to another district that has a plan that will provide an educational environment that is safe and keeps us all healthy. I implore you to listen to the experts, listen to those who have put countless hours in the research to be planning this hybrid plan to keep our children safe. We need masks on everyone to help control the spread of this virus. We need some sort of version of a hybrid plan to get our children back to learning in a safe environment for social distancing. Again, I love this district. I never thought I would have to choose between my children's safety or their education. Thank you again for all you do, and thank you for the time that I'm listening to my concerns. Jody Parsham.
Michelle Iber?
Hello, my name is Michelle Iber, and I'm a parent and a teacher in this district. I believe that education in our schools is an indispensable priority. I'm passionate about the content I teach, but I'm even more passionate about guiding students to be prepared for the lives they choose. I worry about them and care about them, and I want them to thrive. In 1999, two boys who were my age went to school less than 60 miles from my home and shot and killed teachers, students, and men themselves. After Columbians responded, we had screwed the windows closed, added safety locks, and implemented drills. If there's any threat, we err on the side of caution as well we should. COVID-19 is not as harmful as Columbians don't in America. We cannot see it. Is it real? When will our students get it? If they do, will it attack? Now, how about our teachers? Will they get sick? Will infected teachers and students have permanent cell damage? Maybe not. We don't know. Let's imagine two scenarios. Both start with our district opening with a hybrid plan as proposed by administrators, and the community rallies to provide help to families who need it. Scenario one, COVID is a hoax, or at least not as severe as everyone thinks. The district acted with caution, and so while some districts opened completely and have no cases, we have no cases either. Scenario two, COVID is as bad or worse than I do have in case, but our hybrid plan has worked. Students in districts with five days in session classes went to online only after only a few weeks. Some are sick, some hospitalized, and some have died. We have a few cases, but we isolated quickly, and our distancing measures prevent a major outbreak in our small community. And teachers and students both enjoyed part-time, in-person learning for most of the school year. If we open utilizing the hybrid plan, we keep our children and community safe in either scenario. Why on earth would we take that risk? I started by saying I believe that education should be the number one priority. In a normal world, I believe that. But public education has not been normal for 21 years. My perspective shifted on 4/29/2021 and again in March of 2020. As a parent and a teacher in this district, I believe that education in our schools should be the number two priority. I want students and teachers to be safe. Education is useless if we do not protect their bodies. I worry about them. I care about them. I want them to survive.
Ashley St. Almond Clark?
Hello. My name is Ashley St. Almond Clark, and I am a second-year teacher at the middle school. I teach special education, working with students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I want to begin by saying what an honor this is to speak to you today. I sat on the school board as a student representative in high school, and wow, did I envy the people that I got to get up and say what was really on their mind. It is important to address that no matter what model we as a school district choose, we will not return to the normality of February. I, as a teacher, will not be able to safely share my class and library with the students. My bookshelves are turned around facing the walls so that they cannot have access to touching the books and sharing during. I will not be able to hide our students in the hallways and hand out pencils when students come to class unprepared. I will have to discourage students from helping each other on tasks, as I will have to enforce social distancing. And most accurately, I will not be able to sit down next to a child and read a book with them, because it will not be in the guidelines for social distancing. No matter what we do, we will not return to normal. Additionally, as a newer teacher, I'm still working on building up sick leave. I ask you to think about what will happen to me when my 12 sick days run out. When I have quarantine because I need to be tested, and a test takes 70 days to come back in North Carolina, or in Kevin County, as they've been switching to different services. Will my students worry if I'm okay? This brings up a lot of anxiety for me and other staff, staff around me. There are 71 staff members in the middle of my school, 73 staff members that kept me alive, and this puts us at 134 staff members in total. If we add on this additional 15, that's around 170 staff members. I understand that I am mainly speaking on the theme points of staff members here tonight, but I feel that this is a valid point, considering the large number of people that this reopening plan will affect in addition to our students. I love our students, and I love the Durant community. This is the gym floor that I come to to do dance fitness. I learned to crochet in the library, and I would like to be proud to be a Durant camper.
There's Bethany also to G.
Bethany Olfa?
Yeah.
Bethany, are you on? We're muted right now.
Any audio?
Yes.
Hold up. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. Carry me now.
Is it coming over the microphone? Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. You want me to cut it to you?
Yes.
I just want to thank everybody. I know this has been a really difficult time, and I know that it's a very touchy subject, and we all have different opinions, and are trying to do what is best in the best interest of children. My biggest concern is that when some kids do not let distance learning, and like much other, don't have the option of doing distance learning anywhere else because of the fact that they have special needs. I, with them, maybe face-to-face instruction, and in addition, they also apply therapies that make them keep school. So that is really essential, and if you go to hybrid now, some of that's gonna be going away for some of these students. We are not doing anything in the county to reduce our numbers, so if we're going to the Kathy and the daughters, and we're going to Walmart, and we're shopping in the grocery store, but we can't send our kids back to school, I really just think that we really need to go back to the five days a week and the instruction full-time. Um, that is just my opinion, and so, again, I thank you all for what you do, and, you know, it's a wonderful district, so. Again, I thank you all for what you do, and you know, it's a wonderful district, so my hope is that we can return to full-time instruction.
Okay, is that it, Linda?
Okay.
All right. Then we're ready to move on to number seven, business, fall extracurricular plan.
Last week, you discussed the fall extracurricular plan options. So if you remember last week, the W A Boarding Control recently made the decision to postpone fall sports seasons later in the year. Low-risk sports, which for us is cross-country, is the only one we offer, and began on August seventeenth with competition. High-risk sports can start practice on September seventh with football and volleyball. Recommendation that administration would make is that cross-country, we would compete with only schools within our immediate area, and we'd be no more than five schools. This includes the meet we meet, uh, meet the host, I'm sorry, to follow W A guidelines and how the meet is conducted. Volleyball would be playing only conference volleyball matches with no invitational squads or triangular meets. We'll dress for the event in our home locker room and greatly reduce the time spent in lockers with other schools. Concessions will not be served. Each player will receive four tickets to disperse for attendance at home matches, and we will not sell admission to help facilitate the, uh, the need to not transfer funds. Fan attendance will be in accordance with local county health department regulations. All fans at the events must wear masks and socially distance themselves for those not in their own household. All games will be live-streamed. Football, we will play only conference football games. We will dress for away events in our home locker room, greatly reduce the time spent in lockers with other schools, but concessions will not be served at home events. Each player will receive four tickets to disperse. Thunder volleyball, we will not sell admission. All games will be live-streamed. People must wear masks and socially distance. Both curricular activities, we will attend meetings with both curricular organizations virtually. In middle school athletics, cross-country will begin on September first. Football and volleyball for the middle school will begin on September eighth, and the fan attendance attendance will follow that for the high school sport listed above. Conversation that the school board needs to have is what comfort level does the school board have participation against teams from high-risk areas? What metrics will be considered to use to play or not play schools based on the COVID level? Both the Dunn-St. Troy Conference and the Culver Ball Conference have met. The recommendation of the Dunn-St. Troy Conference superintendents are basically exactly what I have presented, they are exactly what I have presented you. The schedule would work to mitigate the exposure to other school districts or other towns. You would basically, even though we're not in the Dunn-St. Troy football, we would fall in and replace one of the school districts that are in football only for the Dunn-St. Troy. But for lack of a better term, the way we look is Durant would play Boiseville on Monday in football, JV. We would have a home and home with Boiseville in volleyball on Tuesday, Thursday, and then play volleyball, uh, football against Boiseville on Friday. So basically, basically, you would have one solid week of just one, you played just one community. That's the recommendation Dunn-St. Troy Conference superintendents have made. Overwhelming Conference has made the recommendation for football, that they are going to take the first eligible meet and make that a non-conference game, I'm sorry, a scrimmage, and then play conference games, and then they're waiting for guidance from the W I A related to playoffs scenarios, playoff participation, and no playoff criteria.
That scrimmage, Greg, are we involved in that?
We would, we would play whoever our weak, like our weak four opponent would be who we would, it would be a scrimmage instead of a game.
As far as how we decide comfort level, could that be a game-to-game decision? I mean, uh, right now, we don't know what's going to happen.
Right, right. I, it, it will be a game-to-game decision no matter what you decide. I think the question becomes is what are we going to use to make the decision?
Do these other schools use that like burden level?
Uh, right now, uh, there's a lot of conversation among school districts for how to make this decision. There are some county health officers that have advised school districts that they cannot play or they should not play outside competition based on their burden level or their activity level. Um, there are some school districts that are at risk of not being able to host a home game because of the recommendations that are coming off the department. Um, a couple of them are in our conference, our football conference, I'm sorry.
So Ray Allen would have stuck with starting practice and it's not a give-and-give situation?
Yes.
But you're looking for a motion, Greg, to approve, uh, what the Dunn-St. Troy Conference, uh, superintendents request?
Basically, yeah, I'm looking for approval of this plan, the plan in front of you.
I think a motion approved on that. Second up?
Motion been made second to approve the plan that the mission board has just explained. Is there any further discussion?
I did have one question, uh, thrown at me, and I think it's, uh, I think I answered it right, but if the students or the parents decided to school or send us to virtually, can they still place words?
Yes. As long as they don't virtual school to another school district.
Right. Further discussion? Carrie Dunn, all in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, Carrie. Now, we do have another, uh, period here of appearances before the board. So if there's anyone that didn't get a chance to speak the first time, uh, you have another opportunity. You don't have to sign up. Just go up to the microphone. And, uh, I, I would like to say at this time that, that I know that everybody in this room is concerned about the safety of our students. And, uh, that is the one thing, whether you agree with the plan that's before you or not, uh, I think that everybody in this room agrees that we need to keep our students safe, one way or the other. And, uh, whether we agree with you or not, we very much appreciate your input. We're glad to see that you have that much interest that you come out and you, uh, you told us about it. And, uh, I know it takes sometimes a lot of courage to get up to that microphone, but I very much appreciate all of your input, whether you agree with the plan or not. So at this time, I will ask if anyone else that would like to come up to the microphone and speak.
I would just like to say, everybody here has their reasons for thinking what they think, and they're all legitimate. The problem is there's so much information out there, and nothing says it has any credibility anymore. We are all in this together, and we will get through it.
I would still ask.
Just ask.
Lisa, line up. Now put your mask on.
Oh, I, I see. I'm sorry. I'm sorry about. I, I didn't plan on talking. I just had a question though as I was sitting there. So we just approved our kids to play football, but they, but we can't be in school together? I don't understand. Don't you kind of like swab spit and sweat when you're out playing football or sports? I mean, I was just sitting there thinking that when that just got approved, and I just.
That is a very good question.
So I don't understand how that, that just completely floors me.
But we'll wait for further direction from the W I A A and their doctors to see what they allow.
Because they could certainly give COVID on football, couldn't they, or in the sports, if they're swapping stuff?
Well, I'm not a doctor, but I bet Kathy Dalton would say yes, that's true.
I think so. I mean, I, that just totally just kind of, I don't.
Well, it's a concern, Teresa.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm a mom and a barrier. I'm an old woman, and I've been in this district for a lot of years, and I know probably every single one of you and many in the room. Um, and yeah, we've heard a lot, and it's my understanding that we are going to be five days face-to-face, and we will have safety measures in place. And I think that's super important for all students and staff, everyone involved. And I do listen to different news, and I try to get both sides. I go on mutual news, um, and just this morning, my Good Morning America, we had Dr. Tanya Owen, who is a pediatric nurse, um, train, uh, doctor. And she shared that if you're having a face covering of some sort, that we need to have comfortable face covering, because we know they're not comfortable. Nobody else would have to wear the covering, and we don't want our students to. But we do have to try be proactive and try to meet the best that we can for our kids, so we can educate them, because we want them here and we want to be teaching them. But we also want to do it in a safe way for all those involved. Face covering alone can help eighty percent of the transmission of this. This is a fact by this doctor this morning, and we can hear that in a lot of, uh, data. Um, three feet, at least three feet, gets another ninety percent of transmission. And I think to keep everyone safe, and if you're a high-risk person, you could do another measure of a face shield. Limit the interaction. Break it down into fifteen minutes if you have to work closely with a kid. So we have to remember these kinds of things, and we need to educate ourselves and our staff and our kids. And also just the idea for our young kids to know what's comfortable to them and be proactive and how do we approach it so that they're willing to at least try. I don't want to underestimate any kid, ever. As a special ed educator, I don't underestimate kids. I think it's unfair of us to underestimate that our kids can't do it. Because I think if they knew and they want to help someone, that they would do it. That's just my opinion. Um, I'm saying we can prevent this, but I want to see us decrease the numbers. And again, I'm a body, I watch body language all the time. Face mask make that harder. It's gonna, again, I'm gonna have to learn how to do that in a better way. Um, I mean, and the other thing, I guess, just one last thing, is at a certain point, if numbers get high, do we look at that hybrid model so that we can be safe? If those numbers get high? All right, so, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Anyone else? Last chance.
Hello, uh, my name is Nate Walker. Uh, my wife Beth and I spoke earlier. I'm part, I'm here to give a little bit of information, uh, and then I'd like to finish the message that she was unable to finish. Um, I'm a scientist by training. Uh, I got pulled into the creation of this Facebook group in the last week, and I bring my science background. I bring data. I bring research. That's my background. Um, in the overwhelming sea of data that we face ourselves on Facebook and other sources, you rely on experts. You rely on your administration that you paid to develop a plan using the experts that we have available. You rely on scientists and research scientists who have spent careers trying to figure out how best to prevent infectious diseases. So in the presence of way too much information, you rely on your experts. I also stand here as someone who has survived a disease with an even lower chance than COVID. Uh, I stand here being a cancer survivor. And in my twenties, I, I developed a cancer that is one in a million chance. Three hundred cases a year in the United States. I stand here today as an eighteen-year survivor of a disease that is lower percentage by far than COVID. It terrifies me to think what COVID could do. I have friends dealing with it right now. I don't know if they're gonna be okay. That terrifies me. I know that percentages, I work with data all the time. I know that percentages are low. But for the people that are affected, their life will never be the same. Now I'd like to finish my wife's message. Teachers can't teach if they don't feel safe. If they need to go elsewhere to feel safe, we will not have enough qualified people left to teach our kids. I want this district to stay strong. I do not intend to leave. My kids want you to know that they have hopes of being a paleontologist, an animator, a pediatric oncologist, and they want to be success stories for your school district to tell. I admire the teaching staff, and I want them to continue influencing my kids. However, after having spent the last five days in countless hours of conversation and listening around people's concerns, I am convinced that this board's current trajectory and lack of transparent communication means that COVID is not the only legitimate threat currently facing this school district. I am concerned that a surge in teacher resignations and a rise in students opting out could significantly impact this school district's ability to remain a vital place for educating young minds. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming.